One, to the Union Township Board of Trustees meeting, please rise and we'll join me on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. Call this meeting to order and, uh, Mr. Campbell, let the record reflect that all three trustees are present. And before we begin, I just want to remind everyone of a new policy that we have. Uh, it's a good thing, I think, is our comment cards up front. So you can fill out those comment cards as much as you'd like up until we do public comments. And it's just a way for our administrator to collect the information in case he needs to get ahold of you afterwards. Uh, and then also a reminder that, uh, just a five-minute, um, uh, time limit on, on, um, what you'd like to say. But let's move on. Uh, gentlemen, first item of business is approval of minutes from January 10th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second item is, uh, approval of a minutes for January 10th, 2023 zoning meeting minutes. Entertained a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item is correspondence from our fiscal officer, Ron Campbell. Mr. Campbell, is there any correspondence?
Yes, sir. I have one. It is a, uh, it's a liquor permit. Um, and it's actually a transfer. Uh, it's going from Hawkstone Associates Incorporated, doing businesses Clough Pike Shell, number 16, 4261 Mount Carmel, Nebraska Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, four, five, four, two, five. And it is transferring to Rom VJ LLC, doing businesses Clough Shell, Clough Pike Shell Gas, 4261 Mount Carmel, Nebraska Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, four, five, four, two, five. Got a notice from Mr. Flaherty that it is in current zoning and, uh, so no objections from the police department. That concludes communications.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is our proclamations and special presentations. And, uh, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion. Uh, no, actually, there is no motion for this one. Uh, Mr. Sergeant Eric Williams, why don't you come on forward, sir? Come on up. Twenty-five years of service. So this is kind of two recognitions. Twenty-five years of service, sir. And this is also, uh, your last week with us as you, uh, are, are going on to a new venture, retiring.
Yes.
And, uh, sir, the floor is yours.
I don't know. I'd like to say thank you to the trustees, Lieutenant Reese, Lieutenant, both lieutenants. Uh, twenty-five years has, has come and gone super fast. Um, I'm gonna miss this place. Everybody here is like family to me. But that comes a time where it's time to move on and we're at that, that, that time right now. So I'm looking forward to, uh, this new adventure. I'm ready to do it.
You have, you have, sir, you have definitely, is your family here, by the way?
Uh, no, it's just me today.
Just your old Valentine's Day. I understand. No, no date night tonight at the trustee meeting?
No.
The, uh, uh, twenty-five years, sir, and I know, uh, you led us well with the colored guard in Washington DC and, oh, the honor guard, sorry. And, uh, uh, you've done so much for us and, uh, really appreciate you, sir, very much. And, uh, gentlemen, did you have anything like that?
I, hey, just want to say thank you for your, uh, twenty-five years and also any stories over the last twenty-five years that, uh, you care to tell? Anything memorable?
Mr. Becker, there are tons.
Let's hear them.
Yeah, I tell you what, I gotta tell you, if you wanna meet me after the trustee meeting, I'll give you tons and tons of stories.
Yeah.
Plenty of probably wouldn't be, uh, appropriate for.
Fair enough. You, you, uh, you're heading off to, tell us about your new endeavor.
Uh, I'll be taking over as the chief of police, uh, in New Richmond, the village of New Richmond.
It's incredible.
Uh, so, yeah, it's gonna be, uh, a challenge, but I'm looking forward to it.
Well deserved. Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Logan?
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of, uh, a lot of comments come to mind, but, you know, we've talked about this, uh, over the time, over the years that you've been here, over the years I've been here. Um, you know, love being able to connect, have those conversations, talk about also your time in the Marine Corps, uh, you know. Uh, see you standing there at the Marine Corps pin on, on your uniform, which is something new that we got to launch with the, uh, with the uniforms, uh, last year. So, uh, you know, you're someone that I always think of with, with that, that recognition that, that we do. Cause this, cause this isn't the first retirement for you, right?
Well, actually, I didn't retire from Marine Corps, um, but this is my first retirement.
First, yeah. Yeah, yeah. But, but no stranger to the, to the new, new, new chapters. And that's what we're talking about from, from that aspect. So, uh, you know, the, um, as much as we'd love to have you with the retire, rehire, we, we simply, we don't have that as a policy, but New Richmond, we got, we got a friend down in New Richmond now, which is good. And they're gonna, you know, they're going to benefit from, uh, the experience and dedication and what you've brought and what you've maintained here in Union Township. And, uh, just proud to, to, to have, have you and have, uh, uh, the way that you've mentored, uh, the other Union Township police officers. Uh, so I know you've, uh, always take the mentality to leave something better than when you found it. So.
Oh, absolutely. The bench is deep here. Tons of great officers. So, yeah, they're gonna be great.
Unfortunately, I'll be missing your, uh, uh, retirement, uh, this Friday. I'll be out of state. So, um, I can, my apologies on that, but.
No problem.
See you soon.
Absolutely.
I know this isn't just, uh, twenty-five years recognition. It's also kind of a send-off retirement. Uh, Mr. Reese, would you like to add anything as well yourself?
Sergeant Williams, Eric and I go back a long way. He was hired about five months ahead of me. We've served in investigations together. We served in the sergeant's office together. He is one of five or six reasons that I slept good at night, Kevin. I had great sergeants out on the road and I'm, I'm really gonna miss him.
Outstanding.
Really gonna miss him.
Thank you, sir. Then, uh, got this award for you as well. Come down there, give it to you. And, uh, so I'll take a picture with you. Eric and, uh, appreciate you very much, sir. Thank you for your service. Absolutely. Okay, moving along. Uh, next item is our public comments. Before we begin, Mr. McCormick, would you mind checking up there real quick and seeing if there's any more cards? Good? Okay. Well, perfect. Looks like we just got one. I'm excited. Mr. Chris Hicks, come on up, sir. Happy Valentine's Day to you. And, uh, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and your address for the record.
Chris Hicks, 444 Woodward Court, Cincinnati, Ohio. Uh, thank you, Mr. Dills.
Yes, sir.
Let me know when my time starts.
Started.
Thank you for deactiva, I want to thank you guys for deactivating the baby box and more importantly, for putting safe haven awareness signs on every fire station in Union Township. So now the only safe haven location in the township without an awareness sign that I am aware of is probably the police station. And I'm hoping that they put up one soon. At the Union Township Republican Central Committee meeting last Monday, Mr. Dills and Representative Schmidt discussed the strategy to get the law changed to allow unattended boxes where there is no person in the building available to render immediate aid to a surrendered infant. The plan was to do it via the budget bill to evade public hearings and prevent citizen referendum. That would be wrong. The law's from 2017 and in the five-year rule review process in the summer of 2022, both the Police Chiefs Association in Ohio and the Fire Chiefs Association supported the rule for 24/7 staffing. If Mr. Dills and Representative Schmidt seek to change the rules without hearings, might I suggest they also include these additions? One, that the boxes have independent safety testing by UL, ETL, or another independent firm. Two, that there be a requirement for a dedicated 15-amp circuit, not just recommended, and that all wiring be GFI protected. Three, that alarm issues with the boxes that caused BST&amp;G's box in Sunbury, Ohio to close be addressed and the boxes have built-in additional cellular redundancy in their communication system. Four, that there be provisions that confidential information on babies and mothers not be shared with a private company who then uses that information for fundraising appeals. Five, that press releases and press events surrounding boxed baby safe haven surrenders be prohibited because such surrenders are supposed to be private, anonymous, and confidential. That boxes in Ohio, six, that boxes in Ohio post, Mr. Luke, are you paying attention? Uh, that boxes in Ohio post Help Me Grow Phone, the Help Me Grow phone number, and that Help Me Grow be expanded to be 24/7. Seven, that information be posted on boxes on how mothers can learn about their custody, help, and adoption options so that no one would ever later feel they've been exploited by one of these boxes. We need to get beyond politics and photo ops, Mr. Dill, Mr. Luke, and, uh, Mr. Becker. We need to do the right things. We need to make sure that mothers with unplanned pregnancies know that we want and encourage them not to dump their baby in a box, but to come forward and get help. So I appreciate the changes that have been made. I'm hoping you, that you, Mr. Dills and Representative Schmidt, will work together on some of the items that I've brought up that should be part of any rule changes. And finally, I appreciate that tonight that you have a discussion on social media policy for the township. I hope part of that discussion is a reminder that the reason for the discussion is because the police department was blocking people from having access to police social media. That's wrong. It's unconstitutional. And I think it's a, I think it's a welcome thing to stop it and to get an actual official social media policy in place. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Ricks. Okay. And moving on from public comments is personal actions. Our police department, uh, NRM Police Chief Tony Reese, would you like to go and take over?
Thank you, Mr. Dills. I would like to present Evan Friedman to the board for position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Friedman is a resident of Amelia, a graduate of Amelia High School, and served in the United States Army, receiving an honorable discharge. Mr. Friedman received his OPADA Police Officer Certification in the Cincinnati Police, Police Department's Patrol Academy and comes to us from the Cincinnati Police Department where he has served as a police officer since 2017. Mr. Friedman has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, and psychological examinations. I'm requesting the board appoint Evan Friedman to the position of police officer in accordance with a collective bargaining agreement and pending successful completion of a physical examination. Mr. Friedman's start date is scheduled for March 7th, 2023.
Thank you. Lieutenant Reese, uh, gentlemen, entertain a motion to recommend a conditional offer of employment pending physical exam to Mr. Evan Friedman. Has a full-time patrol officer at a pay rate consistent with 24-month rate at the current CBA. Appointment effective March 7th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All right. For a discussion, Mr. Becker, you ready?
Um, no, I just say, uh, thank you for, uh, applying and, uh, being accepted here in Union Township. We'll look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, likewise, looking forward to having you here, uh, on the road. Thank you for your service in the Army. Uh, you'll find this is a incredible group of, uh, people to work with within the Township Police Department, but let alone that, fire EMS and administrative staff and, uh, the essential, uh, essential employees. So, it's, uh, you know, hundred, about 155 of us, but it feels like a family and, uh, you'll love the culture. So, really excited to have you here.
Thanks, sir.
Lieutenant Reese, did you ask about his basketball qualifications?
Well, he looks athletic to me.
Okay, fair enough.
We fit him in somewhere, so.
I see you stand down there looking at me. The, uh, thank you for your service, our country and the Army, yeah, very much. And then five years with CPD.
Yes, sir.
Very qualified, outstanding. So, uh, thanks for coming on board, sir. So.
Sir, thank you for having me.
Absolutely. And you brought your family here as well?
Yes, sir, I did.
Oh, good. Put, put them out real quick. Yeah.
Uh, the third row, that's my wife, and the, uh, my room, uh, mother-in-law has my son outside the door.
Excellent. Yeah, yeah.
He's waiting.
How old is he? About 18 months?
Seven months. Seven months. Yeah, she's big, she's big guy for seven.
You're, you're bigger than us.
Sister-in-law, grandma, and my father, uh, my brother Jacob, and then my mom.
Love it. Love it. Appreciate you all coming out and supporting us well. And, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Evan.
Thank you very much.
Great. Evan, make sure to stick around and we'll get a picture of you and your family, okay? And, uh, Lieutenant Reese, would you, uh, like to take over again?
Yes, sir. I would also like to present tonight Adam Rolfe to the board for the position of police officer for Union Township. Mr. Rolfe is a resident of Mount Orbe and a graduate of Western Brown High School. He received his OPADA Police Officer Certification from the University of Cincinnati Claremont College Police Academy and has served as a part-time police officer for the villages of Batavia and Williamsburg. He comes to us from Mount Orbe Police Department where he works as a part-time police officer and as well from the Ohio Veterans Home Police Department. Mr. Rolfe has successfully completed all pre-employment phases for the position of police officer, including background, polygraph, and psychological examinations. I'm requesting the board appoint Adam Rolfe to the position of police officer in accordance with a collective bargaining agreement and pending successful completion of a physical examination. Mr. Rolfe's start date is scheduled for March 7th, 2023.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to recommend a conditional offer of employment pending physical exam to Mr. Adam Rolfe as a full-time patrol officer at a pay rate consistent with the probationary rate of the current CBA appointment effective March 7th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, just again, appreciate, uh, you coming here to Union Township. Uh, I'm a little curious, like, you were, had been part-time in your previous positions as a police officer? Was, was no full-time available there? Or was that just your preference at the time?
Uh, which department? Uh, I worked full-time for Williamsburg Police Department.
You were full-time?
Yes, I was there about eight months. Yes, sir.
Maybe it was Batavia is what I heard.
Yeah, I did that, uh, two years of auxiliary officer, so.
I see. Okay. Awesome. All right. Great.
Mr. Luke?
I probably got, uh, plenty of, uh, great stories also from, uh, the Ohio Veterans Home, I can, I can imagine. It's a wily bunch. None of them are pretty great in there. That's good. That's good. Well, now, we look forward to having you. Uh, so, welcome team. You know, likewise, great culture all the way through. So. Happy to have you.
Thank you. Well said. Did you bring your family as well?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, point them out. Go ahead.
Wife's there in the blue jacket with my two kids, uh, my aunt and uncle, sister-in-law, uh, my sister in the middle, my mom's on the end of the blue, and then my grandma.
Excellent. Good showing. Yeah, good, good, good. Love that. And, uh, love, lucky to have you on board, sir. Very much. Yeah, yeah. And, uh, with that, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Adam, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to have you on board.
Thanks, Mr. Dills. Appreciate it. Welcome. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Welcome to the unit. We're excited to have you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, great.
Go down, dude.
There's a bit of smoke. A lot of people.
A lot going on.
All right. All right. Moving on to our department reports. We'll start off with our fire and EMS service with Chief Stan Diamond. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Dills. For the month of January 2023, we responded to 226 fire and service calls, 559 emergency medical responses. We saw a total of 560 patients and we transported 402 times to local hospitals. The department completed 1,261 hours of training, uh, participated in 17 public education details. We had 77 hours of EMT paramedic, uh, ride time on our paramedic units. We completed 116 fire safety inspections and, and participated in five inspections with the Claremont County Building Department. That concludes my report.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
Yes. All right, Chief Diamond, there's, you know, the, the public gets a, a number of reminders about, uh, smoke detectors and replacing the batteries and, and, uh, the, the danger of carbon monoxide poisoning in the winter to have a detector for that. But there's not much in terms of, um, I, I guess heads up with the community for fire extinguishers. And, uh, you know, I think it's probably a good idea that every kitchen have one or every garage have one or, or, you know, both. So my question is, what do you recommend? There's a lot of different varieties out there. What do you recommend for, for home use? For the typical residents, for, you know, say both garage and kitchen, wherever else there might be a danger of fire?
So, fire extinguishers come in a variety of different classifications and a variety of sizes. And if you run through the classifications kind of quickly, there's a Class A, which is ordinary, for ordinary combustibles. Class B, that would be for flammable liquids or greases. Class C is for energized electric, uh, appliances. Class D would be for, uh, combustible metals. And Class K would be for, um, cooking appliances. Majority of the time that you'll see a Class K extinguisher would be commercial cooking in restaurants and those kind of things. To specifically address your question, the best bang for your buck is you can get a multi-purpose fire extinguisher. And every fire extinguisher will have the ratings, uh, on them, on the extinguisher itself. So you can get a multi-purpose ABC fire extinguisher. And that way you're covering all of those kind of aspects, especially for home use. So whether you're talking about an ordinary combustible, paper, cardboard, wood fire, or a fire in your kitchen with a, with a Class B or a fire, electrical fire at an outlet or your electric box, it would be Class C. So my recommendation is that you want to have at least one. And depending on the size of your house, or if you want one in the kitchen and the garage too, um, and just, just get them multi-purpose ABC extingu, extinguishers so you don't have to worry about which extinguisher you pull for what fire.
And do they come in different sizes?
They do come in sizes. And of course, you know, very simply put, I mean, they're rated like 2A, 10BC, 4A, 10B, 20BC, 20BC, whatever. Um, and all that's gonna tell you is that obviously the larger the rating, the larger the fire that, that you're gonna be able to successfully extinguish with that extinguisher. They'll have the same product in them. It'll just be more of it.
Any particular brand, uh, either go with or stay away from?
Nope. Nope. Anything that's, uh, you know, approved, UL listed, you know, fire extinguisher, they'll, they'll have the ratings, the, the 2A, 10BC or, or, you know, and the ABC, no matter who makes it, who the manufacturer is, they'll all have that same rating, schedule, and classification listed on the extinguisher.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Luke?
Chief, thank you for the update and the report. Um, CPR, are we seeing, uh, some more, more call, calls for support with that demand?
Yeah, the, the demand has obviously been up since the, the football game. Um, we've added multiple additional courses and those have been filling up. So we're, we're keeping up with the demand. It's great to see that activity. We've had a couple, um, group events, like church events, where they really didn't even want to be necessarily, uh, certified in CPR, but just wanted somebody to go over what the dues and don'ts were or something, uh, whether it was a CPR type of event, a cardiac arrest type of event, or even first aid. So, you know, that publicity has been positive as far as the public education standpoint, informing a lot of people about the dues and don'ts of CPR and first aid.
Perfect. Well, appreciate it, chief. Thanks for the support of that initiative and continuing to get that information out to the public. concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, we've had a few collaborations and quite a few fires recently and, uh, owned a storage facility and, and as we partner with other townships recently. So your, your teams are very busy, very busy. So just wanted to please just tell them our much appreciation to them, very much.
It, it has been extraordinarily busy. And, uh, you know, talking to area departments and investigating fires with other agencies, you, um, it's not, most of those have not been a result of the cold weather. There's really no explanation for it, that there's been a bunch of fires.
Yeah, it's crazy. Yeah, yeah. Appreciate you, chief, very much. And, uh, next department would be our police department, would be NRM Chief, Mr. Tony Reese. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Dills. The following is the monthly report for the police department for January 2023. The Communication Center handled 3,558 calls for service for police fire and EMS and 5,137 total calls. They handled 403 juvenile and adult court-related documents that were processed through our records section. that were processed through our records section, uh, for delivery to the clerk of courts for processing. We handled ninety-seven court notices, thirteen Rule Sixteens that were processed for the prosecutor's office. We had no vendor permits issued this month, and we handled one-hundred-and-eighteen records requests. In the public affairs section, officers conducted a Cub Scout drug talk for one of our local troops and hosted several citizen riders in January. Officers also conducted active shooter training at one of the local financial institutions, and hosted a women's self-defense class at the Merth- at the Mercy Health Park Center at the high school. On the operations side of things, we took two-hundred-and-eighty-five incident reports, took one-hundred-and-seven crash reports, made five-hundred-and-thirty-three traffic stops, wrote one-hundred-and-forty-nine citations, and three-hundred-and-ninety-eight written warnings. We made one-hundred-and-eight criminal arrests, eighty-one traffic arrests, and served eighty warrants. Uh, in the area of training for the month, we totaled one-hundred-and-twenty-three hours of training for police department employees, both in-house and out-of-house, and our fuel costs for the month were thirteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, with fifty-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-eight miles driven by police officers. Okay, concludes my report.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Gentlemen, any comments?
Uh, just, just one. So, on the, on the report, you have, um, for open staffing positions, five police officers. Does that mean three after tonight?
Well, we're, we're replacing, technically. Um, I believe originally, we had requested them, we're allotted a few for two thousand and twenty-three. I think we're readdressing that right now.
Okay, so there's still five openings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to apply for that? I'm just guessing. Are you going to apply for that?
Not qualified.
Mr. Luke?
I, I think that the higher vice code allows some, uh, some room for you to...
(laughing) I don't think so.
I believe I've read it in there. I don't know, I mean...
We're looking for a few good men.
(laughing)
Or women.
(laughing) I think you're trying to speak to those, uh, old, old-school Marine Corps recruiting, uh, commercials there. I'm into your tactics. Um, uh, I, on a, uh, on a different note, um, and it's something I keep in mind, I think of for all, all employees, uh, in the township, but, uh, with the police, you know, it's, it's a, it's a brotherhood and fraternity. Um, and, uh, for those that aren't, you know, not necessarily aware, um, you know, anytime you lose a community member, um, so there was news over the weekend, young lady, uh, thirty-one years old, Officer Olivia Zick, she lived on Nature Run, so a member of this township, um, you know, a resident here, uh, but worked for Cincinnati Police Department. Um, and, um, uh, she's no longer with us, uh, and, um, the, I'm proud of the fact that Union Township Police responded in a manner in which they did. Um, that we recently just purchased a, a drone with a FLIR for, uh, thermals, uh, that were able to help, um, help with that process, uh, to, to quickly respond and be able to be supportive of, of, uh, her family and her family's needs, essentially. Um, but, you know, as a trustee, um, as I speak to all of our employees, it's, you know, I support the well-being of our, our employees, and it's something, you know, last year, we kicked off the part of the wellness benefit program with, uh, the Nature Center. Um, you know, that wellness benefit program and providing those type of resources I just mentioned to allow you to do your job effectively, that's something that I stand firm for our employees. I mean, I can speak all the way even over to the service department, and we've helped out with getting new snowplow trucks and getting what you guys need to be able to be effective, because there's a lot that goes on in this busy township. And, um, you know, so, I just want our employees always know that they have support from this board of trustees, and, uh, I encourage community support, uh, for that as well, for well-being initiatives. I think that's, uh, speaks high to our culture and our investment and support of each other as, as a, uh, again, one-hundred-and-fifty-five person, uh, organization, but, um, a community that feels small like family. Just want to show that sentiment at this time. That concludes my remarks.
Appreciate you, sir. Uh, Lieutenant, I appreciate you stepping up, uh, with, uh, our, our chief position, uh, vacant. Also, Lieutenant Blankenship, I know you stepped up as well. Appreciate you both very much. Just, uh...
Thank you.
Wanted to say that, and, uh, running the tight ship. Appreciate you very much. Um, all right, next department would be our service department with our director, Mr. Matt Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. And the secretary division, from January first through the thirty-first, nineteen burials were performed, generating ten-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Four resident graves were purchased, generating two-thousand-two-hundred dollars. Two non-resident graves were purchased, generating two-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Uh, two columbarium niches were purchased, generating two-thousand dollars. Uh, the total amount generated for the period was nineteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. And the roads division, the storm sewer pipe project was complete on Claddy Road. A total of twenty-seven work orders were completed on twenty-six Township Roads. Two-hundred-and-fifteen potholes were repaired on twenty-one streets, and Township Roads were treated for snow and icy conditions on January twenty-second, twenty-fourth, and thirty. And in the parks division, the employees attended the personal protective equipment training on February seventh, and staff is currently performing maintenance on all Township beds. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Chell. Gentlemen, any comments?
All good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Chell, thank you very much. Uh, I know you and your team worked really hard over the winter, so appreciate you very much. Please pass, pass that along to the...
I will. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Next department would be our planning and zoning director, Mr. Mark McCormick.
So, for the month of January, going to be doing especially the violations, if... We had, uh, forty-six zoning inspections, six complaints, one unfounded complaint, two warning citations, two fifteen-day non-compliance letters, uh, no thirty-day violation letters, no, um, cases being forwarded to the township attorney, four cases resolved with or without action. We had three-hundred-and-three illegal signs removed, five violations, uh, for the monthly total, uh, reinspection of violations. We had three of those with no nuisances as far as permit activity. Uh, we had two commercial permits, four changes of use, two signs, one temporary, uh, sign, three single-family dwellings, three additions, one deck, one, three accessory permits, uh, two pools or fences, for a total of twenty-one permits, and the total revenue was five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Um, with the fire department revenue noted there at the very bottom. Um, otherwise, and was going to mention that we do have a zoning commission meeting here next Wednesday. Um, the, the informa- all the information as far as the staff report, all the materials that, um, one would view in our public file, as far as the plans that have been submitted are already on the website. It is the second scrolling item on the website, and it's also under the planning and zoning tab, um, under the case item. Um, in addition to that, we just wanted to reference, we did send the letters out. We're sending those out not just to the adjoiners now, but with, with, to everyone within two-hundred feet, even though that's not what our code says. Um, we are also having signs made, which are being ordered right now, that we're going to start posting on the properties that say "public hearing, Union Township case, planning and zoning with our phone number." We had these signs where I worked previously, and they did a really good job getting people to take notice of cases, um, whether they got their letters or not, or whether they were not necessarily an adjoiner, or someone within a couple hundred feet, but someone who lived up and down that area. Um, so those signs are being ordered this week. Um, we're just trying to get the vendors selected here at this point, uh, but we are in the process of doing that. Um, just wanted to thank the trustees. I met each and one of you, uh, the last month or so. Um, we are going to try to set up a joint meeting with, with the trustees and the zoning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals and stuff, to talk about changes to the zoning code and, uh, zoning activities. And, um, I just wanted to follow up and say, we did issue the permit for the pet suites, and we have quite a few things, uh, in store for the next two or three months that should be coming our way.
Excellent. Gentlemen, any comments? Mr. Luke?
Uh, Mr. McCormick, it sounds great. Uh, I like the, the sign display, and I, and I appreciate going, you know, beyond, uh, what's required in the zoning code right now. Again, cumbersome processes, we've get to make updates to that, which is phenomenal, but the fact to just go above and beyond right now and do it out two-hundred feet, thank you for executing on that. Uh, Susan, it doesn't go unnoticed, the, uh, uh, the signs. Uh, I sent Susan some, some picture messages and some signs several, several months ago about, uh, a community doing something similar, it was QR codes. I think that the telephone number is going to be, be great. Um, I don't know if, what's your thoughts on that QR code, but I'm sure that it's already a, uh, you know, that you've already extinguished that as far as where we're at and, and the process with the sign. Um, so, I, I think it's wonderful, um, and helps with that, and looking forward to the formal engagement with the other boards. Um, it's something I've said, you know, uh, for a long time here, as far as being able to have, uh, informal or formal engagement with, with the other, uh, apparatuses that is, uh, makes us all community. So, appreciate it. So, thank you for taking that lead.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Uh, Mr. McCormick, I, I agree. Uh, we're, so anytime there's a zoning change, commercial-wise, I love this moving forward. Uh, the, the goal is just to get the information out to the residents. Uh, we're, we're putting it on our Facebook page, our website, physical snail mail, uh, and putting up physical signs up and down the streets. Love it, love it. It's a great idea, and, uh, appreciate you very much spearheading that. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Uh, lastly, would be our administrator, Ms. Susan Ayers.
Thank you, sir. Um, a few things to discuss this evening. Um, first, as we always know, the, uh, open checkbook is up to date and, uh, ready to go for citizens. Um, the Glen SD campus land development continues. Phase two sale that we discussed the last month is continuing. We hope to have it closed the end of this month or early March. Um, and I know they are, uh, anxious to get moving forward on that development. Uh, Route thirty-two, uh, road work is continuing, and we will also have I-Cole construction going out to bidding soon for the widening of I-Cole's Road and the roundabout constructions that have been planned through the TID. Um, County Engineer Jeremy Evans has agreed to be here at the March meeting to discuss the prog- progress on the bidding, um, and show the construction plans and the concepts, so that we can understand exactly what's going to be happening and what the initial plans are, as well as some timing issues. Um, initial work has been done, and they're reviewing drafts on a pickleball master plan for the Klepper Park grant that we received, as well as master plans for each of our parks. So, that has been ongoing, and we're looking to get that moving. I'm hoping that we're going to have to be able to start playing, um, pickleball at Klepper this summer, so we're looking forward to that coming out. Um, I think as at the last meeting, Mr. Dills, you asked about, um, the QR code signs for a potential application for in the parks. Mr. Taylor and, uh, Mr. Miller did a great job getting that up and running. Um, I think the sa- signs are being made at the moment and will be up, um, shortly to allow residents a chance to scan a QR code in the park and give, um, if there's any concerns or things about the facilities and give that feedback. They'd be able to do it straight from our website in the park facilities. So, you should see those coming up online soon. Um, as you mentioned earlier, the police chief job opening has been moving along. Um, we had twenty applicants, a mix of local as well as, um, national candidates. We, uh, will be interviewing candidates this Thursday and Friday. I look forward, um, I think we're shooting for a community breakfast reception on February the twenty-seventh. That date is tentative at the moment, but we will publish it as soon as we have it finalized, to allow community members to come, meet the finalists, hear their vision for the police department. Um, with, hopefully, we will be shooting for a March appointment of a new police chief. Um, along those lines, we've been working on selecting the consultants for East Gate Mall master planning and the economic viability analysis. A group of staff internally met with our, uh, four finalists, um, this week. And we are down to a couple that we want to ask some additional questions to, so we hope to have some contracts to propose on that here in the next meeting or so, as we work through that process with that group. But it was, I think, refreshing to hear, um, the group's experiences and, and their ability and ideas on how to move the project forward. Um, we are having our first working session on February the twenty-eighth. Um, so looking forward to that in two weeks from this eve- uh, this evening in this room. Um, at that session, I'd like to use the first one to discuss our priorities for the township, type of strategic planning session, to say, what do we want to do, um, in twenty twenty-three, and how do we want to prioritize our goals. Um, with that, and as part of some greater outreach on this, as well as some of the economic development issues, township issues, um, our medical marijuana concerns, within the next few days, I'm going to be publishing an electronic survey about development in the township and priorities. I encourage all citizens to be on the lookout for this week on our website, our social media, and some flyers around, um, township sites and the community boards, um, with another QR code we're working on to try and, um, get that survey out to as many people as possible. Um, in the survey, we're looking at demographic information, strengths of the township, concerns for the township, asking about types of businesses citizens would like to see, soliciting feedback and concerns regarding medical marijuana facilities, asking about the priorities that residents think we should be focusing on as a staff, asking for any additional vision for the township, comments residents would like to submit. Um, I hope we then sit down on February twenty-eighth, we'll at least have some initial feedback from residents to consider, along with, um, yourselves to say, okay, what do we want our priorities to be here moving forward? There are so many things that we have going for, as in, and we just want to focus and say, here's what our high priority items are, here's what some medium priority items are, and here's what some lower priority items are, so that we can focus on how we're allocating staff time and resources, um, to making those goals happen. Um, I think that is all I have at this time.
Ms. Ayers, thank you. That was a lot, very much. Thank you, thank you. Uh, gentlemen, any comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, just one. The, uh, so the, the candidate search for a police chief is actually a worldwide search. We got a candidate from Morocco who applied. I was, uh, curious, we might have a Nigerian prince in the mix as well, apparently, uh, I...
Yeah, indeed. We published, um, the posting on our website information, as well as the Ohio Chiefs of Police and, um, some of the Cincinnati Centers for Local Government, as well as Indeed, and it was amazing what kind of candidates came out of Indeed, I believe.
Huh.
Some were clearly better than others, yes.
Indeed.
It's tough to compete with a prince.
(laughing) It's all you.
Mr. Luke?
Um, hey, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Ayers. Uh, so, um, OKI, uh, just want to reference on that real fast. The, uh, uh, gentlemen, we've been at, uh, a few, few board meetings already this year for OKI, and, um, you know, they greatly impact our region, our area, when, when they're able to help, uh, secure grant funds for stuff like sidewalks around West Claremont. And, uh, right now, they're, they're doing, uh, strategic planning that they're going through, where they're soliciting survey and community feedback, and I know we've already reshared that and pushed that out. Um, but, uh, if you guys have seen that, help push that out, uh, for, for our residents to identify the things that they are interested in in the region. I think it's just going to help provide the data set, so that it can continue to help OKI make decisions and align priorities to do things like, you know, when they bring money to the table for, uh, sidewalks around West Claremont High School. Greatly impacts our, you know, our community right here, uh, or our roadway infrastructure. So, uh, I just kind of reiterate, take a moment to reiterate that. Um, and then, um, uh, yeah, Ms. Ayers, you're talking about the, uh, the working session. Yeah, we look forward to that. That's a, that's a first for a working session. Um, I can count, uh, a first for, uh, talking about specific strategic planning, uh, which can be a big elephant, so we take one bite at a time, and I know that that's, you know, where we're at, uh, and that, that helps us be efficient and effective. Uh, s- it sounds like, uh, kind of the new movement here in Union Township on that aspect. Uh, and then, uh, I think that's also a first for, uh, surveys, uh, going out and soliciting feedback from residents. Uh, so, we look forward to those results and having that type of engagement. So, you know, thank you for the work that you're getting done, and, uh, look forward to, to more to come here in twenty twenty-three. And I'll take the time right now, don't miss it, the end, say, you know, John, then, ha- you know, Happy Valentine's Day, and thank you for spending it with us here at the Board of Trustees tonight. So, um, Ms. Ayers, we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Uh, Ms. Ayers, I, I agree. Uh, will you have an update, uh, with East Gate Mall for our working session, uh, or, or is that for the, the March meeting?
Um, I anticipate for the March meeting, so we are down to, um, a couple of questions that we want to ask two firms in particular.
Okay.
Um, so I'd like to get that information back. Um, we may have an update, but I imagine it's probably closer for March.
Okay, fair enough, yeah. I'm very excited to, to get to that. That's great. Um, the survey, excellent, love it. Thank you for, for, for taking the ball and, uh, running with it. Uh, that's excellent. I mean, we're, we're up here to try our best to make decisions for what the community wants. What a better way than actually trying to throw out a survey and get some feedback. So, what are the top priorities for the township? Love it. Uh, and then, scoring that deal for the sidewalks, that's huge. Love it. I think that's going to be, it's, everyone for the high school has, has got to love that. Um, I know the whole bus situation and, uh, high schoolers not being able to take the bus, and this will help out tremendously. Uh, it's a start, and, uh, it's, you know, love it. So, good idea. Thank you for scoring that deal. So, that is all I got for that. Um, where am I at? Okay. Next item will be, uh, public hearings. There is no public hearings tonight. Is that correct, Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Correct, okay. Uh, gentlemen, any old business I'd like to go over? No? Okay. Moving on, new business. Uh, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for approval of minutes, or I'm sorry, approval of payments. Motion to approve payments is prepared by fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell.
Selvette.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B is in Bravo. Gentlemen, I will entertain a motion for approval of monthly financial report, uh, as prepared by our fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell.
Selvette.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C is in Charlie, an approval of purchase orders. Gentlemen, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion for approval of purchase orders exceeding $10,000 as recommended by our township administrator, Ms. Susan Ayers.
So moved.
Second.
All right. And before we do discussion, Ms. Ayers, would you like to go over those purchases over $10,000?
Yes, sir. First matters for Atlantic Emergency Solutions for $18,000 for bumper-to-bumper inspections on vehicles. Next is for Motorola Solutions Incorporated for Call Works 911 system yearly service fee for $30,000. Next is a To The Deer and Company for a John Deere Gator amount of $21,600. The next is for Pavement Management Group LLC for pavement conditions rating for township roads and facilities for $34,000. Next matter is Backslid Tractor Sale Incorporated for a 60-inch zero-turn Kubota Moore amount of $15,600. Last matter is for Rumkey of Ohio for the spring junk collection days for $25,000.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Gentlemen, any discussion?
Yes. I have a number of questions. First off, the, the, the top item there, Chief Time Link, for $18,000, what is a bumper-to-bumper inspection?
So, Mr. Becker, annually, we, we bring in a firm to do a complete, top to bottom, front to rear inspection of our entire firefighting fleet. So that's about a dozen between the fire engines and the aerial trucks. And they do inspection and service, mechanical, drive train, electrical, brakes, pumps, hydraulics, air systems, aerials, a complete inspection and service, which includes filters and fluids. I mean, obviously, the fire apparatus are very expensive, very complicated equipment, and, and we do a complete inspection and service, top to bottom, front to rear.
Okay, sounds good. The second one here, Lieutenant Reese, this looks like it's self-explanatory. You know, maybe, maybe it's not, but $30,000, 911 systems, is that, is that just a general cost or is it something different than what appears?
Is that the annual cost of running 911?
Maintenance for 911.
Maintenance?
Yes, for the fire and police.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, we have a, a John Deere Gator for $21,600. Is this new piece of equipment? Is it replacing something? What's, what's the story on that?
It is a new piece of equipment.
Why do we need it?
And it is actually going to, so we auctioned off some unwanted or obsolete items and we got back $19,981, which covers almost all of the cost, with the exception of a little bit less than $2,000. So we are taking the existing Gator and moving it to the cemetery. And the new Gator will be in our parks department. It'll also be used for township events. It is actually a four-person seating. So we, if we have to shuttle people back and forth to other areas too, as well as our employees too.
Okay, tell me about the, the pavement condition ratings for township roads and facilities for $34,000. What's that all about?
So all of our township roads, which are about 133 center lane miles, they will, they will have a independent analysis done and we'll get a pavement condition rating, zero to 100. And we can generate our, as well as our township facilities, parks, fire stations, police department, this civic center, every, everything we own will be evaluated and we can better base our paving program off of that. You can make some assumptions. The last time we did this was 2010. So you can make some assumptions based upon, you know, a 2% to 3% depreciation in the pavement. However, getting an updated version, there's some newer software out there. We'll have GIS capabilities. I know the zoning department has shown an interest in using it as well. So there are some multiple benefits for that.
Okay, sounds good. The, the next one on the list, 60-inch zero-turn mower for the, for the cemetery for $15,600. Is that a new piece of equipment? Is that replacing something?
That is a replacement. That is to replace a 2004 Tiger Cub Skag.
And where's that going?
The cemetery.
No, the, the one that's getting replaced?
The one that's getting replaced is probably going to be auctioned. It's 19 years old.
Okay, so it goes for auction?
Yes.
The last thing, you got spring junk collection. That's always a popular with the township. What, when do you anticipate?
Probably mid to, mid-April to the end of April. The date isn't confirmed yet, but it'll probably more closer, more like closer to the end of April.
Okay, that sounds great.
We'll have the date on the next meeting.
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you. That's all you have, Chair.
Mr. Luke? Yeah, yeah, a couple real quick. So, Mr. Becker, you, you, you beat to the punch on, on many of those there. But just a supplement, one definitely sounds like we need that John Deere Gator for the, that's kind of one of those surprising facts to me. I'm like, oh, you would think that, that your department would have that already. So I'm much supportive of that. That's, that sounds like we'll get great use and benefit out of that. And then the PCI, or the, you know, the pavement management group, I just have to say, that's, it's one of those odd things where I say, that's very exciting because like Mr. Taylor said, the news there is the fact that this was last done in 2010. Okay? So it's been essentially a parametric estimate of what condition the roads are in. And gentlemen, I mean, I know we're right on top of it. Someone emails or whatever and sends out, I mean, they get a response, they get one or two, three of us show up their door within minutes sometimes or act for potholes. But you can see how, knowing what the actual condition of our roads are in and not basing it off of a metric that's 13 years old is a significant benefit and as we utilize the, the technology here. So, I mean, yes, it's $34,000, but I think as we start talking about, you know, Ms. Ayers, the, the budgeting process and, and the more strategic planning process and, you know, if that's something that can be planned for and budgeted for, and maybe it's an update in five years. Maybe it's, makes sense to have an algorithm tell you what the condition of the roads are in. And obviously, eyes and ears and all of our involvement, but to be able to cover the 133 miles, I think there's a benefit to be had. But it can be, you know, later discussed, hey, maybe this is the last one that gets done for the next 13 years. You know, maybe it won't be until 2036. But anyway, it's just something I wanted to, to, to share as a piece of excitement there for, for, for providing essential services to our community, especially when you hear a lot about potholes and roads and road condition. So, you know, that's one of those things, it's just a force multiplier. As we do the collaborative buying to get the volume discount with the county. So I think we're, we're taking the taxpayers' dollar and we're gonna be much more effective with it.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Anything else? Good. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is D is in Delta. Gentlemen, I will ask for a motion for a discussion. Oh, never mind. I don't need a motion for that. Discussion on social media policy for township social media accounts. Ms. Ayers, would you like to talk about that?
Thank you, sir. Yes, the first matter we have is a discussion about social media policy. As Mr. Hickson indicated, there was an incident brought to my attention, we're concerned about people being blocked off social media pages. What became immediately evident was that the township's been operating without a formal social media policy for a period of time. I think best practices would tell you that, you know, having these kind of policies in place will help prevent incidences from happening because there's a set policy and a set way of doing things. And so what I've provided to you is an example of potential policy to allow us to have some rules and regulations and allow to make sure that there's a clear chain of command about who is managing our pages and how we're responding and how we want to use our social media accounts. So we've set out in policy the purpose and goals for our social media to help achieve the strategic goals of the township, proactively communicate with citizens and stakeholders in the community, encourage and support communication and civic culture, and increase the transparency of government. It sets out, you know, the township administrators, the main contact or their designee for setting social media policy. And if there's a question, it provides a chain of command of who can review and make decisions based on that policy with the designee, the township administrator, as well as legal counsel as cases further develop this area of law. Provides us guidelines for introductory statements and specifications that should be made on each of our social media sites so that we're advertising the correct information. Provides our goals and what we're gonna share on our pages, as well as guidelines for comments and interactions. We want to make sure that our pages are promoting speech, but also are considered family-friendly and appropriate for the type of work that we do and making sure that we set out our expectations for how people use our pages. So I wanted to get this out and solicit if there are any comments, things that you'd like us to consider. I know Mr. Becker and I had a conversation previously about some language that maybe didn't make some sense on linking accounts. So we'll get some clarity around that language. But I wanted to open it up if there are additional comments, things you'd like to see, things you would like out, that we can have that conversation and work to adopt new policy that we need to operate.
Gentlemen, any discussion, questions?
Yes. Ms. Ayers, I just want to commend you for, once this came to your attention, that we had a problem, to take immediate action to correct the problem and then put together this policy to address it going forward. So I appreciate you being on top of that.
Mr. Luke?
Yeah, I mean, it's really same, same sentiment there, Ms. Ayers, as far as, you know, it's a great thing with, with new eyes and fresh eyes, new perspective on, on, you know, areas for improvement and areas for setting standards from the, from the bottom up, top down. And this is absolutely something, like you're saying, to be operating with social media for, I, I, you know, I wouldn't be able to estimate exactly how many years, but I'd probably say seven years. Lieutenant Reese is about, about 2015 or so.
For the department Facebook page.
Yeah, for, for the, for the multiple departments. So that, look, that's something that, that's on the board. That's something on the administration. You know, that's, that's giving the departments the tools and resources to effectively do their jobs. And so, you know, I'm just grateful for the opportunity that we're able to, to address that and, and bring that professionalism and support for the departments to, to better connect with the constituents and just really not miss that opportunity. Because, you know, the communication, transparency, and engagement with the constituents is, I mean, that's, that's, that's what we're here to represent and, and helps us effectively do our jobs better. So thank you.
Ms. Ayers, thank you for putting this together. You did a good job. It's very tight. I like it. And, you know, a lot of times, we don't know to put something in place until a problem arises. And so, okay, brought to our attention, Roger that, let's get on top of it. And you're doing exactly that. So I would just ask that this item, do you think we'll be ready for our working session? Or do you want to shoot for March to adopt a policy?
I would like to shoot for March. So if we've had a chance to review it, we'll tighten up some language, make sure we have it. And certainly if there are any comments in the public, we'd be happy to take that. And then I'll bring it back in front of you in March.
Excellent.
So currently, as that goes, is there some intermittent operating procedures or, I mean, what type of, what type of subject matter expert are you leaning on for yourself on that with departments?
All of our department heads have had a chance to review this policy, make sure it works for their operations. Everyone has signed off that they understand and that they agree with where it is. And we will fine tune those, make sure. But everyone is working under this policy in the meantime. And if there are concerns, we, it'll also, this month will give us a chance to make sure everything's clear, that there's no additional concerns. But to address any further concerns, the department heads have seen this and all have a copy and understand what some of the expectations are moving forward.
Okay. Hey, that's, that's great. Sounds, uh, sounds, sounds great. Like a great plan there. Again, how you, how do you take a, you know, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? Sounds like right now, the, the take on that is, though there's not a formal policy that's adopted, everyone's in agreement with this, everyone's working with under this, which essentially having no policy in place for, for whatever, seven years, it's better to be where, where we're at today, operating under some framework. And then, yeah, bring it to the board for essentially ratification in about a month. I think that sounds wonderful.
It gives us a chance to work out any kinks in the system and then make sure we're all clear on what the expectations are and work out any concerns prior to the board taking final action.
Sounds great. It'll, it'll hold any future boards accountable to, you know, knowing that there's a social media policy and if things need updated. And, you know, who knows where we're at in 10 years? Could be, you know, whatever. It could be the whole, whatever, something like the 3D glasses and stuff. I don't know. Maybe that's old school. It's 3D movies, but you know what I'm saying. So things could change and we gotta keep it on our radar and keep moving forward. So thank you.
All right. Good. So, all right. Moving on to the next item, E is an echo, appointments to the Park and Recreations Committee. Gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to reappoint Rich Glisten for a one-year term to the Park and Recreations Committee effective February 1st, 2023, and appoint also Ms. Joy Lidle for a two-year term to the Park and Recreations Committee effective March 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
I, I do. You know, it's, it's great to see Rick, Rich reappointed. I know he's been interested and involved with, with township, trying to engage where he can. So that's great. And then also to see Ms. Joy Lidle, and she brings a great perspective. As a resident, as a frequent user of the park, I've often had conversations with her of park areas for improvement, enhancement, safety. And, you know, this is a great avenue to engage our citizens and have that stakeholder feedback and share that perspective. So I think she'll, should be a very strong asset to, to the Parks and Rec.
Yeah, Rich is currently the president of the board. First time I met him was because of the Park and Recreations Committee. And he's done an excellent job. His attendance is 100%. He showed up to every meeting, very well-versed. He actually has a tree back there. Sounds goofy. I never thought much about it, but he's an expert at soil and trees and, he's, what's that?
Arborist. Is he an arborist?
Oh, Matt, is he an arborist?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. And he's brought a lot of knowledge that I'd never even thought about. And he's done a great job. And actually, it was his idea for the QR codes at the, at the parks. He's the one that brought it up and at that, at that meeting. He's done an excellent job his first year as president. And I'd like to see him on there again. Joy, president of chamber, lives in the township, and just really involved in the committee. So I absolutely support, support this decision. So, that being said, Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Dills, with him as an arborist, do you know, has he ever, does he climb trees? Has he done that?
I don't think so. I will.
You ask him. A lot of times, a lot of times certified arborists are.
So totally judging, he did not look like a tree climbing kind of guy. But I could be totally wrong. Could be totally wrong.
I don't know if you can pinpoint who he was a tree climbing guy or not, but, I mean, maybe back in the day or something.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
I, I had the opportunity as a young man to, to, to climb about 40 feet up a dead tree and do that with a chainsaw hanging from you. And I'll tell you what, I didn't do it too often, but it's a, it's an adrenaline thing, that's for sure.
I think I would pay someone.
I was that someone.
The next item is F is in Foxtrot, New Township Electric Aggregation Program. And for, let's see, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the township administrator to enter into an electric aggregation agreement with a supplier recommended by Energy Alliances Incorporated, the community's energy aggregation consultant for a price not to exceed 7.5 cents per kilowatt hour for a term not to exceed 24 months, starting in May of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Ayers, would you like to discuss that more?
Thank you, sir. As you're well aware, since 2015, the township has enjoyed a natural gas and electric aggregation program adopted by the voters. To date, the program's generally been very successful. Customers have experienced price certainty, as well as some savings from the program. We have been working with a energy broker, Energy Alliances Incorporated, to administer the program, as well as give us recommendations on how to proceed. In the fall of 2022, we restarted the natural gas aggregation program. At the advice of the energy broker, we waited off on restarting the electric aggregation program. How it was explained to me was that there's some seasonality in pricing and you want to get, in order to get the lowest prices possible, it's better to bid electricity in the spring and natural gas in the fall. So we proceeded with that advice. What is before you this evening is particularly about restarting the electric aggregation program. It does not affect the natural gas aggregation that people went through in the fall. So with related to electric aggregation, prices have been up this year significantly. Customers, when the program expired mid-year last year, we're right back to the Duke price. And Duke is in the process of bidding out to get their supplier. They have two auctions a year. They procure 20%, 20% of their total volume in September of 2022 at a rate of 11.5 cents per kilowatt hour for the period of June 23 to May 24. It's my understanding they're set to procure the remaining 80% on February 21. Our energy broker is indicating they believe that supply rate is going to be in excess of 9.5 kilowatt hours, 9.5 cents per kilowatt hour for June 2023. They believe through their negotiations with alternative providers that they could secure the township a rate of 7.5 cents or lower. But it does have a bit of timing involved in it to get the best contracts possible. If they are in fact able to secure 7.5 cents and Duke's rate is at 9.5, it saves the average resident about $20 a month. So they have been So they have been working with different providers, bidding out, suggesting with contracts, but anticipate here as Duke goes to lock in their rate that it's going to be the best time to secure a contract for the electric aggregation. What's before you this evening is asking that I have the authorization to enter into an agreement on the condition that the broker can provide no higher than 7.5 cents per kilowatt hour for the 24-month period. That will give them a chance to negotiate. If they can get it lower, we certainly will do that. But there is a little bit of finesse in timing here. So with this authorization, it would allow us to move nimbly to secure that best price as soon as the broker believes that's where the best price is.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Gentlemen, any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just, going from memory here, I think the Duke price was about 6.9 right now, something like that.
Probably.
And, and just so the public understands, that's the generation price. It doesn't include distribution. I think the combined price right, right now is right around 13, 13 and a half cents a kilowatt hour, something like that. So this is a pretty substantial increase coming down, down the pike here. That, that concerns me. I appreciate we're going to do this aggregation thing to try to cap that, at least for a two-year period. That, that would certainly be a good thing. Uh, I guess one thing I want to point out is that like with the gas, and then correct me if I'm wrong here, but it was that ballot initiative that the public passed to allow us to do this aggregation. The ballot language said that it had to be an opt-out. A lot of people don't like that. I personally don't like that, but it is what it is, and that was done by the public. That's not something we have any control over. So when, uh, so assuming we, we come up with a contract and an offer, seven and a half cents, whatever it's going to be, the public will be notified of that and they can do nothing and, and take what it was we're offering, or they have to opt out if they want to do something different. So I just want to make sure I'm correct on that, is the public understands that.
That is absolutely correct, and that was due to the way the ballot issue was framed in 2015. And so this is very similar to what the public just went through in electric aggregation. In the event we get a contract to, uh, natural gas aggregation in the fall, if we were to get a contract, let's say the end of February, the beginning of March, they would work to implement that. There'll be new websites, information that goes out on our website and social media, letters sent out to each of the residents indicating what has been going on and moving forward. And then they'd have information delivered to their home about if they choose to opt out, here's how they would do it, so that they would have that information in advance of a may start date.
Thank you. Time, Sharon.
Slu.
Good, thank you.
Good. So Ms. Ayers, I believe I already know the answer to this question, but you said in the event. So in the event it does not go down below 7.5, we would just not enter into this deal. Is that correct?
Correct. It would come back for you in another meeting with the next best recommendation.
Fair enough, okay. Okay, any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Carers?
All right, last item on the agenda for new business is item G as in Gulf, Approval of Resolutions. Resolution, gentlemen, I entertain a motion for resolution 2023-06, CDBG 2022 Grant Application Authorization to Adopt Resolution 2023-06, authorizing the filing of an application for CDBG funds.
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Ayers, would you like to discuss that, please?
Yes, sir. The every year Claremont County Department of Community and Economic Development receives money from U.S. Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. They call it the Community Development Block Grant, often referred to as CDBG grant funds. These are funds that are meant to help areas in the county that are considered low to moderate income according to the census and the guidelines set up by HUD. Each year Claremont County asks local government entities to apply for subgrants to help the particular low to moderate income areas within your jurisdiction of the local government. In Union Township, we do have some limited census tracts that qualify as low to moderate income. In 2022, for example, we received grant funds from this grant to help offset costs for new playground equipment at Clepper Park, which is in the appropriate census tract. This year, the staff considered a few projects to apply for, that we would like to apply for and are asking for your permission to enter an application for the funds to help with putting sidewalks in the area surrounding Summerside Elementary School. I'm going to put up on the screen exactly the areas we are looking at. It is 3,526 linear feet of sidewalks, that's the area surrounding Summerside Elementary School. And this focuses on connections from the existing neighborhoods to the school. There's some spotty sidewalks in this area right now. It would finish out the coverage as well as help connect the school to the neighborhood as well as some connections to Clepper Park. So we are asking for your permission to submit the application. The current best proposal is about $270,000, I believe, Mr. McCormick, but we've been working to make sure there is not lower estimates available. We would ask for grant funding in the amount of $135,000 with a 50% local match to complete the project and asking your permission to submit that application.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Gentlemen, any comments?
Yeah, I, uh, I think it's a phenomenal project and builds into the connectivity. And we know, you know, residents are asking for those types of services. And if you look at the map here and you get pulled up, you know, Marietta and around Summerside and down Elmont, just help connect that whole area. I mean, I think it's just, it's, it's great. I think the residents there would be very happy. Obviously, there's always, I don't know how much goes into the, into some of the yards where the sidewalk placement is. I anticipate that type of feedback. But I've been talking with residents in that community that have had concerns with speed through there. And I know we've recently deployed a speed sign. And so I think they're going to frankly appreciate the fact that this is something to further promote safety and get people not necessarily on the streets and on the sidewalk and kind of de-conflict the cars that come through there because they try to beat the stoplight and they come down there fast. So kind of a two-pronged approach that we got to do to enhance safety there for the schoolchildren going to Summerside and up to Clepper Park. So I think it's, it's a great project. So thank you.
I did also want to mention, I spoke with superintendent for West Claremont, indicated we were putting this forward and they indicated they were happy to support the application and were excited about it as well.
Excellent. Good, good. Ms. Ayers, thank you. Mr. McCormick, I know you're doing a big part of that as well. Thank you for that. And, uh, Ms. Ayers, go get us the money. Let's get, let's get it done. So, Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Carers?
All right, gentlemen, at this time, we're at comments from the board members. Mr. Becker, do you have anything, sir?
Uh, yeah, handful of things. First off, and it kind of ties into, well, we just talked about the sidewalks, if I didn't make it time, I just wanted to save it for, you know, end of meeting, board comments. So, you know, some good stuff we got going on in Clepper Park. We had the pickleball courts. I know we had enough playground equipment. Matt did that? Mr. Taylor, is that playground equipment getting installed yet? Okay, so it's still in the process. I know we, we approved the expense for that some time ago. And, you know, in sidewalks, we were partnering up with, you know, getting grant money to, to get all that done. And, you know, certainly been a lot of demand for sidewalks with, with the public. And I'm, I'm really excited that we're making these things happen for Union Township.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Mr. Luke? Yeah, um, you know, similar sentiment. Just, you know, thank you to everyone for joining us tonight. I'm proud of the progress we've made in Union Township. And just as you see tonight, from hiring new patrol officers to the CDBG grant application, to the appointment of members to the Parks and Rec Committee, we are showing our commitment to our community. And also I just want to emphasize the importance of our township's social media presence and proactively communicating with residents, increasing transparency and fostering a positive civic culture. And that's going to just completely be multiplied when we have the new website going live and that ability. So I think it's timely and great, and just thank you all for your support in what we're able to accomplish. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Luke. Well, gentlemen, I appreciate you spending this evening, everyone up here for Valentine's Day. Sure, there's a lot more you could be doing, so I appreciate that. I, I, Mr. Taylor sent me the, the QR code signs. There's two up at Veterans Park, is that correct? And we're, we're going to let them be and test them out because they have to sync with our website. Email goes directly to Mr. Taylor, and I, I love it. I think this is going to be the start of something much bigger and that we could put up throughout the whole entire township, whenever there's public area that, that allows it. But if there's an issue, concern, something that we don't see, someone could snap a picture, put the QR code in, send it directly to Mr. Taylor, boom, problem is, is going to get resolved. So I love it. Use technology. It's great. Lastly, just, uh, at the, I, I was out of town. I could not make it, but we had the, not we, but there was the Bilburg Gala. And I believe one of our officers, Mr. Chris Gottsche, was Officer of the Year. Is that correct? Ms. Reese?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to give him a shout out. He's Officer of the Year. That's excellent for his line of work. So please, please let him know that we love him and appreciate him. Congratulations on that. So please do. But as far as upcoming events, Township offices are closed in observance of President's Day on Monday, February 20th, 2023. The next Board of Trustees meeting will be a, uh, February 28th, 2023, 6:00 PM for a working session. And lastly, the Board of Trustees regular, the next regular business meeting will be March 14th, one month from today, at 6:00 PM as well. Gentlemen, that concludes that. I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22-G as in Gulf as follows, to consider the appointment of a public employee or, or official pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22-G as in Gulf 1, and also to consider the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Becker?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're into executive session at 7:19 PM.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'll entertain a motion to exit executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Campbell, real call.
No action taken.
With no action taken.
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 8:40 PM.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Campbell, real call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 8:41 PM.